All right, it's 10:00 AM on November 20th, 2025, and we're here for a workshop with Bonner County Commissioners, Planning Department, and the Planning Commission regarding the comprehensive plan land use map for file AM 0007-24. And as I recall, in our last workshop last week, we finished walking through the area of the geographic region of Hoodoo Mountain, south of the Ponderay River. So we have the area north of the Ponderay River remaining to review. And for reference, for all of our sakes, for some reason, my map layer just turned off. It's odd. What's going on here? It's like I lost server connection. Can't read that. Refresh the app. It's like I lost access to a server.
Do you span the dropdown?
Thank you.
Arrow next to it.
If you ever get an email from our group, send it to the OCC staff.
Thanks, Chad. I can't read it because my Zoom window of participants covers it on my screen. It doesn't appear the same on my screen as it does on the large screen.
Thank you.
I didn't have all these issues before the rest of this.
Okay.
I just have the mic.
Okay, thank you. So since you're on the request, when I respond back with everything, I'm going to just tag you in so that you can...
So have I been detected as a virus or?
One question.
Might as well have a little fun with it. Looks like I've been kicked out of every server that provides every map layer except for one.
My computer's been dying since last week, and it's just technology. It's upgrade season.
It's just your chance.
Oh, is it a watercolor?
Finger paints about as precise as I am when it comes to paintings. One of the few home improvement projects I avoid, sheet rock and painting. Not good at either one.
While we're waiting for this, do you have any other workshops scheduled?
We do.
Yes.
You have to pull it up. Let's see. I think Alice is looking them up.
And the fifth, sixth. Fourth to fifteenth, definitely.
So I think that gives us a total of three more with the additions.
We have two more. I'm working to schedule them.
Okay.
Commissioner Don, can you try refreshing? Fourth at 10:00 AM.
Looking better. Woo, all right, thank you. We have colors again. Let's see. Do you want to turn on commercial and industrial taxing parcels? So as a reminder, sorry, I'm speaking to myself. I need to, to understand the data we're looking at, I'm going to turn on the layers that contain the commercial and industrial parcels based on how they're taxed. So those are going to have the, what I'll call bronze or brownish colored outline for commercial, and then the pinkish purplish color outline will be the industrial parcels. And then we're just getting going. We've had some technology hiccups. Right now, we have the recommended land use layer on. I'm also going to turn on the two zone change layers, which create the hash marks so that we know within the past five years which parcels have had a zone change.
Could we add in one layer that we saw in the last one that we weren't using before?
That would be the commercial and industrial. Yeah, so that's the, those outlines that we turned on just a minute ago. So I'll zoom in so we could see what a few of those look like. So you can see here in the Old Town area, we have, let me turn on the legend again. The industrial is this more reddish purplish outline color, and then this brownish bronches outline color are the commercial tax properties or parcels. Then we do again have on the zone change layer for zone changes that have occurred in the last five years. Those are represented by, I'll find an example, black hash marks. There we go. This whole area, you can see the hash marks. So we have those two layers turned on. So we were saying that we concluded a review of the Hoodoo Mountain geographic area south of the Ponderay River at our last workshop, and so now we are moving north of the Ponderay River to work towards concluding the Hoodoo Mountain geographic area. So how about if I zoom in to the Old Town area and we can work our way from west to east across the northern portion of this area?
Can I ask that we consider also, because it's, and I think I said this last time, that the Planning Commission help us guide the way to go also? Because sometimes, I think on the last one, there was a little bit of input that had us doing things a little bit differently for the way in which you guys, because you guys already know what we're looking at, what we're going to see, that you provide some guidance on what we might, what changes have been made kind of in advance, once we hit an area that you know might look a little bit odd? If that makes sense? Because I think we're coming in a, up on some changes.
And then, yeah, so I agree. As you, as you guys have input that helps us understand the recommendations, we've also been toggling back and forth typically between the recommended and the current, just so we can see the difference. So I will turn off the recommended, turn on the current land use. If I turn on the recommended as an overlay over the current land use, you'll see area is kind of gray out. And that's where, I turn off current. I think the Planning Commission can help confirm. My understanding is this typically is showing the difference between moving what's currently zoned as AF10, or I'm sorry, as R10 into an agricultural district designation, because that's the only place that's being recommended for technical parcels now, as compared to being split between ag and forest and rural residential. So because now 10 only exists within the proposed ag designation, we're seeing a shift for those larger parcels into that recommended designation. Is that accurate? So that will help explain why we would see the difference. I'm opening it up to current and former planning commissioners who would like to offer...
So this is Alan Songstad, a former planning commission member. This area that you're talking about right now, we made really very few changes because we either complied with what's there or we were trying to accommodate the sub-area committees. So we really didn't make very many changes. The one that you just, that you identified clearly is one of them. Anything that was R10 is now, under the current proposal, is Ag10. The only area that I recall any discussion about video significance is not in the Old Town area. It's over in the Priest River area, and that was an industrial area that there's been, there was some discussion about as to what the City of Priest River wanted versus what is there and what's currently zoned. And I think we pretty much left that the way it is currently zoned by the, by the county. And I think the City of Priest River, as I recall it, wanted, I'm not sure what the designation was that they wanted. Do you recall?
No, I don't.
I don't know whether it was Rural 5 or something, but whatever it was, since it is an industrial area, a commercial area at the minimum, we thought it was appropriately designated.
Thank you. I know we'll get to that area shortly, so. And it was my understanding as well that the City of Priest River was suggesting that they would prefer a rural residential designation in those areas. So we can take that into account in our discussion.
And again, I think we discussed this last time, but the theory, I think there is, again, looking towards annexation, and that if there was a lower density designation, that there would be an incentive for the property owner to be annexed to the city. Otherwise, they were concerned that there would be, they would be landlocked. It doesn't really change the character of what's there, but that's the theory.
Yeah, just so. Matter of if you're incorporated or unincorporated designation. Not that it's a minor consideration, but it's the primary difference. My understanding. So I'm going to keep sliding east along the river and Highway 2, unless a commissioner of either entity would like to point out something. Zoom in on an area. The, I'll switch again, turn on the current land use so we can see, because again, we have a little bit more variety now along the river. So this is the, the current land use. I think if we draw our attention to this area, if you can see my cursor, kind of middle of the screen along the river, between the highway and the river, I think we'll see a change there when it comes to the recreational designation recommendation. So current land use. We had the, I'm sorry.
Can you unclick that for one? There was a flash across the screen that changed for me, but then it was in that pink area, I thought, yeah, that.
Yeah, I was accidentally toggling that on and off when I was not intending to.
Okay.
So I was trying to show the difference between current land use and the recommended land use. So turn on recommended.
Why is there a couple of parcels that are white?
Are we looking in this area, Commissioner?
Yeah, right street. That one and the one to the west of that.
That's the City of Priest River.
Believe it or not.
Okay. It doesn't pop up. Who the owner? Mano LLC, the one to the, that little one right there, yeah. Is that the City of Old Town? Okay.
Well, actually, I think it's Priest River, but. Anyway, it's an incorporated area, so.
Okay.
Very weird story.
For a later day.
So I think the primary change in this area is the recommendation to create this strip between the highway and the river for a designation of the recreation as compared to the current rural residential between the two existing transition designations.
Did we intend to leave that changed? Or was that another one we forgot to change back? I don't remember why we would want to leave that as correct.
That was the question, based on the conversation we had on the south side of the river, for me, the question. Because these get back to the larger parcels. And maybe, like you said, I don't know if you recall if that was just a leftover correction that didn't occur.
Well, this is Alan Songstad again. You know, I, we did this so long ago that it's hard to remember all these parcels. I mean, this was almost, this was over a year ago. I don't, I don't recall the discussion regarding that particular parcel. So I made it, you could change it back, it doesn't...
So... I guess from a...
You want to turn on what the actual use is there? I mean, if you go to the GIS map and see what's there, I don't recall whether there's a marina there or anything. I don't think there is. That area is a mix of land uses, residential, a little bit of commercial.
Oh.
Sorry, I'm trying to get to the other GIS map. I'm just going to open it again because I can't see it past my Zoom menu.
The interesting thing about those parcels, they're high bluff, and the railroad sits at the bottom of the bluff between, so it's railroad between the parcels and the river. So the other parcels on the south side of the river all had low, low property access to the river. Makes some sense to have those recreational, but I don't know. Up here, it's a, there's an RV park in there, there's open fields, there's some agricultural, there's residential.
It is a mix, and it's interesting to me that we have the existing transition designations on either side of that area, and then the, what's now proposed mixed use on either side of that. And I'm wondering, are there factors that would cause us to think differently about those parcels? Or should it be consistent throughout that stretch? Because of the fact that we have two transportation systems, to your point, the railroad and the highway, it seems like the mixed use actually might be a more appropriate designation in that area.
There may be a logging company in that area, too. I think it's not, is that where Acre is? Or whatever, Acre. So I think there's a, yeah, so that's a commercial industrial sort of use. So maybe it all should be more transition or what we designated as mixed use. I think the large parcel is, is that logging company.
Right.
Yep. It certainly fits the criteria that we tried to establish for mixed use since it's along a major highway and...
Yeah, it's just because you have two different types of transportation systems there, one on this north and one on the south end of those parcels, it seems, between the railroad and the highway. Yeah. It seems a little odd that we wouldn't have a continuous type of designation through that, through that area, from my perspective.
Well, then maybe you should change it. The recreation between the mixed use, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, because right now, it's rural, it's rural residential designation. It's proposed as recreation, but I'm actually wondering if we, if we look at our definitions that are proposed right now for the designations, if the mixed use is actually the most applicable because of the fact we have two types of transportation systems running through those parcels. So if we go...
The water plays a factor.
No, it's cut off, though, because of the railroad. You know me, I'm not one to easily give up a rural designation, but I'm, again, trying to go after that consistency that we've been talking about, and I'm...
Oh, you're still sharing your... Oh, wait, pray to go back to the map.
Okay.
I was trying to pull up that, what you're doing on my computer.
Oh, gotcha.
And look at the map at the same time. Then I looked up, and I was like, oh, you went there.
I just wanted to pull up the designations.
Yep.
So the... Sorry, you guys can't see it, but when I try to get to my tabs at the top of my screen, there's actually a Zoom bar menu that constantly blocks my access. I'll have to figure it out. I'd avoid that in the future. So getting back to the map. So it's... So we go from the Incorporated City, which is the white or the non-colored area all the way on the east edge of the map, then we hit a mixed use zone, which is currently designated transition, similar. Then we have this middle area, and then we go back to a mixed use designation recommendation. But from a context of the land perspective, it seems very similar to me due to the fact that we have the highway on the north end of the parcels. And then if we zoom in, let me turn off the... Actually, let me turn on, sorry, the aerial imagery so you can see, instead of the topo. You can see how the railroad actually blocks water access for the majority of the parcels. So the, I think in my mind at least, the recreational concept of it kind of gets cut off from that perspective. And then for me, then it comes down to is rural residential or the mixed use a more appropriate designation? And I think we have to take, in my mind, take advantage of the fact that you have access to two transportation corridors right there. We just don't have very many parcels like that in the counties, so.
This is Eric, and I was just going to say the only other consideration between rural or mixed use would be the availability of water and sewer. I don't know if they're in a sewer or water district right along there, but that by definition is another consideration for mixed use versus keeping it rural.
That's a good point, thank you.
And we had, usually when Don shakes his head one way or another, he's thinking of something, but he's not saying it. So do you...
Welcome to our world.
He's deciding it. Just grab the microphone.
I think I was thinking the same as what Eric was saying. The potential to be served is there because of the city services, annexation possibility. And, you know, thinking along the lines of Priest River's request about the lower density areas next to the city, the mix of zoning districts that could occur in the mixed use designation may lend itself to that lower designation, lower density. Compared to a five acre type of density, it's hard to say.
Wasn't one of their requests to pull higher density into, I mean, that's one of their conversations when we were, I think it was the last meeting, that they're wanting to pull more density into the city and encourage people to annex into the city.
Right, so they want us to have lower density adjacent so that they can offer higher density themselves, which becomes the parent that they get to use to attract people in. So to your point, Eric, there's, there appear to be no specific water or sewer districts in that vicinity for either the parcels in question or the mixed use designations, either east or west of that. But to Don's point, there are others in proximity that could potentially be extended. I think if we go back to the language. So ultimately, the availability of services would determine, I guess, the adequacy of which types of use, if that designation is used, based on this language.
So I know on other areas that we've already visited that we have assigned a mixed use to areas that don't have that water and sewer capability, but this being kind of the longer range intention of land use that it could come in, I think we should probably try and stay consistent also. Why we did it down 95 but not on Highway 2, we might have to answer to that down the road. So I would suggest putting that in as mixed use itself.
Yeah, to me, we go, this is, follows more of that reducing the island effect and just maintaining consistency with what we have for proximity to services and the transportation aspect of it, so.
And we're sandwiched between two cities, so it's going to kind of grow into itself at some point in time.
Yeah, you could imagine them extending each direction toward one another to get closer. It's not that far outside of Priest River. So that's, to me, which, what makes that more viable as well. It's just a completely different condition, topography, access and everything else on the north side of the highway, but on the south side, it's... So given the fact that we have fairly close proximity to services and we have two transportation systems that are directly adjacent to each of these parcels, I think mixed use would be a better designation than the current proposed recreation.
Mr. Holler? You guys calling Travis?
Yes.
Okay, just checking. Thank you for recognizing me. Just, it looks like the distinction on the south end of that Highway 2 there between the mixed use and the rec is from the area of impact. So you have the Old Town on the left. Yeah, that's right where that parcel that is actually annexed into what is Old Town, that is the extent of what looks to be the area of Old Town's impact, what we used to call the area of city impact. And then where the mixed use ends on the other side is the Priest River area of city impact, just to give some clarity there. And then, yeah, I think in this area, just from a planning standpoint, I think it would be advantageous to, to be promoting annexation within those. You guys keep talking about the services, which is exactly the reason somebody should get annexed in, because once you get those services, it usually means higher density. So just something to think about with, with that comp plan stuff. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I see what Travis is saying. The, the current area of city impact, which is now going to be called the area of impact, does appear to bookend the current, not mixed use, transition designation, east and west. And I agree, it's good to recognize that. However, I, I think the the use of this land, given, given those access and other considerations, and how that would likely be developed in the future, to me, it still makes sense more as a mixed use than it does as a rural residential or a or a recreation. Sorry, I have to pause and get my terms correct as I think through this, because we have so many of them now.
As Alan said, for what it's worth, I, I think, I think if we were to look at that again, we would probably make it mixed use. I think that's right. Not sure why, you know, I just don't recall why we did, left that rec.
Commissioner Williams, do you have an opinion on this one?
I, I agree that it should probably be changed to the mixed use.
It's three out of three.
Give Chad the green light.
It's a clear green light.
I think now we're starting to get into some of those areas Alan was talking about as we're hitting the west border of the city of Priest River. And we have some commercial uses that are occurring in the Bodie Canyon area that are existing. And this is an existing transition, if I recall, I'm gonna turn on the existing, existing transition designation. And it's being recommended for the similar mixed use designation. Go back to recommended. Again, these purplish, pinkish outlines of parcels are ones that are currently being taxed for industrial purposes. And I, I don't have any argument to make to have, for that to be something else. And I understand that the city of Priest River may have a different opinion, but I, it's hard for me as a county to, to see that being designated differently.
I agree.
I'm fine with what we have here.
And I'm just gonna continue to move across, following the river, and then we can go north through this geographic zone. And I think we've had a little bit of change here, there's, of course, the wetland bank in the center. That was annexed into the city fairly recently, I believe. I'm gonna zoom out a little bit. See this context a little better. I'll toggle between the proposed and current land use designations.
So that suburban area, that, that's still county, that's not annexed into the city at this time?
Correct.
Okay.
Turn off the recommended, turn on the current. So you can see it's pretty similar, I'm gonna turn back on the recommended as an overlay. Sorry, hitting the wrong one again. So if I'm understanding correctly, as we discussed in other areas, this kind of what looks like a new color, because we're overlaying the current and the recommended, is where we, again, we're dealing with the difference between R10 versus A10 and how that falls into the new proposed designations. Other than that, I don't see any significant differences or anomalies in this area. We're up against the eastern border there, the heavy blue line. So then I'll start sliding north unless a commissioner wants me to pause here.
I don't see any reason to pause.
Okay, that's what I assume, silence is consent.
Yep.
I'm just catching up, okay. I'm gonna turn off the current, so we can just see the recommended better.
You want, which way are you going, are you gonna go up the Washington border or go up the boundary border? Which way are you gonna go north on?
Yeah, I was thinking we would finish this hoodoo area and then continue north to the Priest Lake area.
Okay.
And from there, we'll zigzag our way east. Is there anything in this Priest River, Old Town, Highway 57, Southern Highway 57 corridor area that a commissioner would like to focus on?
Our internet's working at different speeds here, so I have to look up and down.
I'm trying to move things really slow, because they're refreshing on the large screen at about one quarter of the speed of mine, so...
Mr. Gabel.
Sorry to cut a little late to the party here. So Jacobell, that is on administrative for the city of Priest River. I just, before the board ignores the, or dismisses the county or the city's position on, that I've made in previous meetings, I wanted to just call your attention to a couple of policies you may consider. So population policy number three, this is from the recently adopted land or implementation component that this board adopted, what, August of this year. You'll hear me reiterate some of these points this afternoon at a hearing, but since I had them on hand. So population policy number three states the cooperation with incorporated cities and neighboring counties to address growth challenges within the areas, area of impact and coordinate with planning efforts to the extent possible. Land use policy number 11 further states that all nine cities within the county provide or are associated with urban water and sewer systems, which allow and depend on high density to make the services feasible, financially feasible and sustainable. So you just have, and there's more of these, your public services, facilities, one, two, and six. Transportation policy 10, housing policy two, and then implementation policy three, all talk about coordinating with the cities when looking at the growth and planning for growth moving forward. So I'll just further state the, the city's position that allowing for high density development right outside of city limits is against all these policies that were recently adopted. It's just not, not good planning moving forward. I, I would still request that those get moved to five acre, or in this case, rural residential comp plan designations.
So Mr. Gabel, to clarify, it's your position on behalf of the city of Priest River that, for example, it's on the screen now on, to the west side of Highway 57, the proposed mixed use designation, the city would prefer to see that as a rural residential designation?
Correct. Yep, that's the same position that I'd made last month, and I think a couple of weeks ago at the last hearing, regarding the properties on the south side of the river. It just encourages folks to seek annexation inside the city limits before they move for higher density development, which is what's allowed in this mixed use designation.
So I'm having a hard time understanding the point to that. Why we would have city, urban, and then a lack of transition area, would have city, urban, and then we would have rural properties? I'm having, I don't, I need someone to explain that to me. Why would we do that instead of gradually changing our, our use of land from the nucleus out?
I think that's, so my, my, my perspective is, I understand the city's position, it's advantageous for them to attract those who wish to be annexed if they can offer them something better than what the county can offer, essentially.
Because if, if we go into, if we allow the mixed use, which allows higher density, then there may be some private utility company that comes in and provides those services and not the city, so then there's no, they don't have a reason to go in, is that the thinking behind it?
Yeah, it's, it's essentially creating competition in the same geographic market, potentially, is the way I see it. But to your point, the counterpoint, I think, from the county's perspective for me is, but to not do it that, the way that's being proposed, means that we're actually promoting suburban sprawl. Because then where else, where else in the county can such things occur? Unless they occur further away from the urban centers, and then that's a promotion of sprawl, the way I see it. So I'm not, so it's, it's a hard balance in my mind to strike to, I, I'm not gonna promote sprawl. I understand the city's perspective, I don't disagree if, if, you know, that they want to have something attractive, try to get adjacent parcel owners to want to become part of their system.
So is there a problem, and maybe Jake can answer this, is there any rules or regulations or anything that would prevent the city from providing those services to the, the multi-use properties, if they choose to want those outside the city limits?
Well, the city has a, has a policy that we do not extend services beyond the city limits, and you see this as problematic. Just look at the history behind City of Sandpoint extending water services beyond their city limits. Now they don't have control over the densification of, of lands outside of the city, so...
Okay.
It's, it's just, it becomes problematic when it gets outside the city limits, and then it, it doesn't encourage anybody to ever annex into the city if you just give away the connections. So that's not that position the city's gonna take.
Okay. It's a
By leaving it the way
It's a choice of the city, and it's a business decision.
Yeah.
I mean, to be frank, from my perspective, that's what it is. It's, again, I, I'm not disagreeing with how I might pursue it if I was the city, but that's, you know, that's the hard balance, and it's... How do we strike that balance, I guess, is the, the difficult question in my mind.
I understand what Jake is saying, and I think there, there is an element of collaboration with the city and the county as we're creating those guardrails. So I, I understand what he's bringing forward. But I equally understand that our job when we create our plan isn't to try to increase kind of some elements, but of it, because it is a biz, there is a business aspect to it, but in part, part of the reason to pull to do, I, I see it both ways, and, and my mind, when I think of that, my question to me is, what, what is the negative of doing what the city is asking for us to do in terms of the overall county plan? Is there a negative, looking at it that way? And I'm trying to cycle through what I'm hearing Jake say, and I understand there's a business aspect to it, but is there a true negative that we would say, if we did this, this would be bad? Is there a potential to say, if we ignore what the city is asking for, they're identifying a possibility of something being bad, and so where do you lean? When you're in this, I think, for me, I, I honestly, actually, Jake's not even here for me to say this, I might lean more towards what Jake is saying, only because I can't see the real bad of listening to what he's asking for versus not.
So the negative part that I see, changing this to a rural five would be that we would not be allowing our county landowners their right to do whatever it is that they choose to do on their parcel that would fit under the mixed use versus the, the rural five. Whether it be some small business that really doesn't need that water and sewer hookup, whatever that might be, but they would have to get a cup or something to do that same thing if it was rural five. I understand Jake's and the city's stance, but what I'm being asked to do is represent the county. And I think, the way I see it, we'd be representing the county and those parcel owners in the county better by going with a mixed use versus the rural five.
So, but part of what, it's not just about the individual, we're looking at a map as a whole. And so you're also looking at where your growth is and your development and your services. And so it's not about the individual, it's about what is the overall plan? And so when you're pulling it in, there's the growth in a way that supports essentially that infrastructure. And so that's in part what the city is trying to capture, because there's a need to grow and develop in the city, and they're trying to pre, create kind of those guardrails. And so kind of that argument of somebody might, would rather not be in the city limit so that they could utilize the county, what the county does versus what the city does, the city is equally saying, but the growth is here and the impact is seen in the city limits. And so I guess I ju, I, I see that, that there's a greater concern, recognizing that there's issues on both sides, but I see that, for me, it leans a little bit more in favor to the city's plan for that area more than not, because they still will, whether or not we change it, they are still gonna be impacted on in the same way. It's just what is the magnitude of that impact? And I guess I guess that's kind of where, where I see it is, I, I understand what he's bringing forward, so...
The other piece for me is, we, we touched on this last workshop, I believe. Looking at the current designation versus the recommended, I believe all of those parcels that are recommended for mixed use are currently within the transition designation. And so if as a property owner you purchased one of those parcels, then you purchased it with the expectation that you would have those available options for use of that land. So if we were to change that from what's currently transitioned to a rural residential, then we would actually be taking away certain potential uses for those property owners that they currently enjoy, that they, when they purchased the property. And so that, in my mind, as we future plan, the ability to create consistency, preserve rural agricultural areas, but also designate the most appropriate locations that can be upgraded, if you will, to higher density uses, is a part of our growth planning. But I do agree with the concern that was raised at the last workshop, that I don't think we should be taking away what rights somebody purchased with the land when they purchased it. And so that's a hard balance piece for me.
I would agree with that as well. I mean, it'd be no different than taking a commercial section of land that some people bought for investment or developing or whatever for commercial, and then we go and change it to rural five. Now we, we've tied their hands and they, they bought that property with the intention of, no different than the people that bought out in the ag forest areas, they bought that with the intention of it being ag forest and not suburban. Both ways. So I would be, I would support leaving it the way it is.
So Commissioners, if I may.
I'm gonna pause, hopefully you're gonna hear what I was gonna say.
So from what I understand from Mr. Gabel's position is that his biggest concern is densifying around the city limits and giving no incentive for those areas to annex into the city. So I have, I have two points to make here. One, we're hearing the area of impact boundary today from the city of Priest River, so it may be worth, it may be worth pumping the brakes on the conversation until we establish the AOI boundary to see whether or not it, it, it's feasible, and that's not, obviously not a criteria for annexation in itself, but additionally, areas in those area of impact boundaries now with the new subdivision code requires that they first seek annexation from the city. So there is some relief from Mr. Gabel's concerns. I'm sure there's not a full, there's not full relief from it, but at least there's some, there, there's at least some stop, stop guards there to, to help the some, there, there's at least some stop guards there to, to help the city in that aspect. And it looks like Mr. Gabel would like to contend maybe what I'm saying.
Or at least respond.
Or at least respond.
I'm sorry, before we go there, Jake, Commissioner Williams, did you have something else you wanted to?
No, I'm going to wait till Jake goes in, then we'll circle back. But I, I guess I will comment, I understand the idea of changing, but we're talking about the map itself and the whole future. And sometimes that will result in what someone had now changing. But I completely agree, everybody expects to have what they bought when they purchased it. This is a future plan, which is, there are going to be parcels, and we have already done that, where what you've got has a, has a change to it. And I guess you're trying to gauge, is it negative, and I guess that would be the cost benefit, is it negative to go one direction versus the other to where it's a reduction of what someone can use? So I can see that as an issue. So, sorry, Jake.
All right, Mr. Gabel.
You're good, Commissioner. Just a couple of points I'd like to raise. So this is a land use designations that are adopted by resolution, not ordinance. So I don't think that changing a land use designation is going to result in any kind of regulatory takings, because you're not changing the uses by ordinance, you're doing it by resolution. So it's not changing the law. And yes, we do have to, I'll, I'll admit that this will likely lead towards potential changes in zoning. But if at the zone change phase, it's determined that it's too much of a risk or liability by the county to modify these into a low density and match the comprehensive plan, do the potential regulatory takings, then you just don't change the zone. So then you have a mixed match of zoning to comp plan designations. But at least it's an indicator of what the future plan is for this, regardless of what the zone is. And then I'd like to call back to, again, the policies that were adopted back in August. So the Public Services Facilities and Utilities Policy, number one, states specifically, encourage high density development to take place within the boundaries and existing sewer water districts with adequate capacity. So by leaving it mixed use, you're allowing for zone changes down to suburban and rural service center and others that get to, you know, higher density development. And I think Mr. Fan pointed out as well that, that if you surround the city, and this is the point I've made several times, if you surround the city by two and a half acre lots, the city will get landlocked with subdivisions that don't require urban services. So I don't know what the plan is to, to modify the, the lot sizes in the higher density zones, such as suburban recreation and rural service center. But my position is just based on what the ordinance states today. So, and last point is, I've heard this reference a few times of, that's in the county, that's in the city. I just have to remind the board that the city is within the county. So you're representing, the, the county commissioners, of course, also represent those people that live within the site of the city limits. That's all I have.
I think the recommendation from Alex, it to hold off until we address their impact would be beneficial, because we might have a, a better idea on this one.
I'd also like to say too, that we, we can come back and revisit any part of this whole county. Because just by going through a section and completing it, we haven't voted and adopted on it. We're just trying to work our way through it. So we could come back next, next month and address this section or whatever, too. So just by moving forward doesn't mean that we've adopted it.
Right. Nothing's been voted on officially.
Yep.
I agree to that, that position as well. I think it's a, it's a good point.
Mr. Bowman?
Good morning. Dave Bowman here. I don't have a dog in this fight around the Priest River thing. I think this is a very interesting conversation with a lot to be taken into account. But I did want to remind, since Director Gabel referenced the policies that were adopted in August, that this application was vested in 2024. So if you're going to go according to the rules, right, it has to go according to the policies that were in place at the time of the application. And I don't know, it's not like I've gone back and looked at that one. I just wanted to point out that distinction. Thanks.
Thank you.
Is he talking about the area of impact application?
No, he's talking about this AM 724 application. So this was, this was put in and was vested at the time it was applied for in mid 24, I believe. Oh, April 24. So it would have been according to the comp plan policies at that time.
Yeah, point taken. All right. With that conversation being had, sounds like we'll move north then and consider revisiting this area after the AOI hearing is completed. Any disagreement?
No, that's fine.
Actually, I did want to point out, in the midst of our conversation, I noticed, so that when we come back to this area, someone might help remind me, that there is this parcel that appears to be taxed as an industrial use, based on the commercial industrial parcel boundary. And so we should probably take a closer look to understand if the current designation for that is appropriate.
Hollywood?
Yes, I believe it is. Looks like there may be some, I'm not going to conjecture, I guess. I see some excavation occurring, but I don't know if it's a commercial use excavation or something else. I suggest as, as a board, we choose to come back and take a closer look. This is a gravel pit or some other, the equipment suggests it's a gravel pit, but it'd be good, I think, for us to take another look at this property and decide what the best designation would be. All right, continuing on our journey north. See, we have one more of those as well.
I think that's a little sawmill or something up there.
That's what it appears to be.
So it's, it's in a rural five area, but it's being taxed as industrial. That's why, okay. And then why, and by the Peninsula Road there, why does that have a different colored outline? Is that being taxed as something other than rural five?
Which one, Commissioner?
Where Peninsula Road, is it Peninsula Road?
No, that looks like it has commercial.
That's commercial?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the restaurant, isn't it?
No.
Oh, no, that's the log. Yeah.
I think it's a, it's a dock, it's a dock building company, I think.
Okay.
I think.
You know, if, if you go back to the other parcel that, that was surrounded by the rural five, you know, we discussed that piece, even though it is, is taxed as an industrial commercial use. And that, that's by itself not thrown into a mixed use. But because of the access, it didn't have that direct access, access to a primary artery, arterial artery. But the other piece down below, right where the, the road takes off and Peninsula Road there, that does have the highway access. That is a current taxed commercial use. Probably should take a look at that.
So should we just think about coloring that in solid?
Well, I think you should consider the mixed use designation for that one as well.
So that's a single parcel divided by Peninsula Road?
Yeah.
So based on current use and taxing, that seems to be appropriate. My only hesitation is the island effect issue.
And services.
So the services, I have a differing opinion on. Being, being like this one here is one to two parcels, however you want to look at that. And if somebody wanted to throw up a general store or something, it doesn't really require a lot of public services. A septic system and a well would, would work just fine for that. That's how I look at that. Something like that in that area.
Perhaps even consider neighborhood commercial versus the mixed use.
That's probably more.
Is that less, less requirements on that as far as services go?
More appropriate for that type of environment, right? We just want to allow like maybe a general store that's kind of taking care of people in that vicinity.
A lot of parcels are actually in the mixed use.
It's, I'm pretty sure that's a dock building business.
Just interest, I mean, it's
I don't think it requires much service.
But, yeah. They're both manufacturing. Yeah. Both activities are occurring. So I, I think the key for me, Greg, because they both require, I'm sorry, I might say both, mixed use and neighborhood commercial both require adequate transportation and adequate services, i.e. water, sewer.
For the use.
Right. And I think that the primary difference in my mind goes to, as we look at the descriptors, mixed use envisions, potential of a broad variety of uses. And in my mind, the way it talks about it is much larger parcels or a combination of parcels in close proximity that allow for that diversification. Whereas the neighborhood commercial seems like it's a much narrower scope, and could be a little bit more individual, individual parcel in a rural area. And so that's where whoever made the comment about neighborhood commercial, seems like that would be
More appropriate.
More appropriate to the location of the parcel in my mind, as an individual parcel along the highway. Because it's kind of standalone.
Mm-hmm.
I would agree with that. Any commissioners' thoughts?
He's not paying attention.
This is Don. So maybe the, one of the other behind the scenes kind of thing is, as we said many times, under these designations, there are various zones, zoning districts referenced. And you go there to find the criteria, the performance criteria. So even though the mixed use has the suburban in it, then you have to go to suburban and say, well, how do we achieve suburban zoning? And if it requires certain things that aren't there, then some other zone would be probably better. You know, the, the differences between rural service center and neighborhood commercial, they're both listed under each designation. So it's kind of, and we hassled with that a lot in our, our recommendations. So I don't know if that helped or anything, but, but I was also wondering, right across the highway, I can't recall what that building is that sits fairly close. I think it's some business use or whether it's actually commercial, that one, yeah. I don't recall what that is.
Is that the church?
Is it?
No, that, that parcel right across from, that's the Linton property. They do a lot of logging. You know, they, they work on their trucks right there.
So it's more just
The church is closer to the city.
Business use.
On the southern end.
Business use than kind of, because it doesn't appear to be taxed as commercial or industrial, so.
Right.
And that's a, that's a much larger parcel with only a very small portion of it fronting on the highway. So.
GIS has an answer.
Chad, GIS. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. If I may, could I share my screen briefly, Commissioner Donkey?
Please do.
So I'm going through all of the conditional use permits, historically speaking, and I think this might help provide a little bit of context on that particular piece of property. It appears at one point in the 1980s, it was conditionally permitted for use for welding and small engine repair.
Yeah.
And I don't know if the parcel got reconfigured, but it appears, if you look at the site plan here, I can zoom in a bit, that that's Peninsula Road at the top there. And then it's also flanked by Highway 57, if that gives the commissioners more context.
Thank you.
Does that help support the neighborhood commercial application?
One.
It, it just dawned on me that it, the outdoor welding, which they, they're doing there faster many times, that's actually an industrial use.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Because you're, you're manufacturing and fabricating outside of a building.
So did we, is it the, because I think that occurs a couple of different times in that area where there's welding. Is it just kind of like an odd lot? Or is it what we want the area to look like? Because when I think of, I think there's three places somewhere down in that area where people actually do do welding. And I
Throughout the county.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to talk about the area that we're in.
Well, the, the area, that specific area by Peninsula, Peninsula Road, as I said, I think earlier, the welding that they're doing is basically the building docks. So it's an outdoor industrial area, which is why I think if you're going to change it from what we have it, I think you change it to mixed use, because that, that allows for an industrial use. The area across the street that Mr. Linzka had mentioned, they do have a lot of trucks under repair and stuff over there. I don't know what, I don't know what you call that. I guess that's industrial too. But, but that's, that's the only area in that, in that area that I can recall, until you get closer to Priest River, that, that has that same type of use. Once you move north from this area, it's very rural.
So maybe it's right just to do mixed use without particular
Yeah, you could, you could do mixed use there. Just for another comment, just as long as I got the microphone here. There was that other parcel that had in it, when it was industrial, I think. And we, we didn't change that, we didn't change the land use designation on that, just like we didn't change the land use designation on some of the gravel pits in Selly Valley, because they weren't, they didn't meet any other requirement. And from a zoning standpoint, they're just legal non-conforming uses. So.
Yeah, somebody else mentioned access.
Right. So, you know, again, I'd sort of caution you to keep that in mind. As you're moving through this, you're going to see, you know, some parcels like that one out in the middle of what looks like the forest that's industrial, we didn't change it.
I think that's been brought up before, that we'll have things that stay non-conforming uses, and that we're not going to necessarily fix all of that. But it's what does the full vision of the map look like?
Yeah, the line, as Jake said, the land use designation Yeah, as Jake said, the land use designation doesn't make it non-conforming, but zoning does. And also with regard to the Priest River thing, you might want to look at what the zoning is on that. Because I think it's zoned. I think it's zoned, you know, commercial or industrial.
Some's industrial.
And you might also ask Priest River what their plan is, because I doubt their plan for that area is five acre residential properties.
Point taken. So is the board wanting to see this parcel changed to the mixed use or remain rural residential, sorry?
I personally think it is a good spot to have a mixed use designation because of the interchange there between 57 and Peninsula Road for many reasons. In the future, that it could be a convenience store, a small farm market, or who knows what in the future. But because of its location and the two heavily traveled roads and highways there, I think that would be a good spot for it.
Yeah, the parcel has a long-term history of that current use. And I think if we gave it that mixed use designation, as others have pointed out, some of the limitations associated with services and such are going to limit what types of uses could be appropriately.
Exactly.
Put onto that parcel, so I'm unfavorable to changing that parcel to the mixed use designation.
I would, I'm in line with that.
Okay. Chad, if you'd please.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, you may.
Chad, GIS, thank you. Did the board want to, would the board like me to change the entire parcel? Or would you like to maybe have it split between where the road kind of runs through? I just want to make sure I'm doing it right.
I suggest the entire parcel.
The interesting aspect is the northern part, it's like there's nothing buildable.
It does, huh?
It's a great question.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, whitewater.
Maybe you could build a restaurant. Look through the floor and see it or something. I don't know if that's ever been done.
Never walked across something like that before.
It just dawned, face value, it might run into some setback issues to try to build anything there, both from the stream and the highway, so.
I don't see where it's.
Very small building area.
Triangle, it's.
Very small. Very small.
If there is a triangle at all. So I think to Chad's point, it probably makes sense because of the road to have just the southern portion. You know, I always give great pause to doing a split designation, but I can see why it makes sense in this instance.
Do we have the option to put a note in there that explains that? Because I equally don't like the split idea, but I understand it. So that there's something that documents why that one has that. Like a little pin that explains why.
Secret GIS note?
Yeah, like a little pin.
I don't mean secret, I mean.
Well, I don't know, like a.
Internal, yes. Apartment-specific information.
Well, and then it'll allow people to understand, because whenever you hit the anomaly, when you come back to make a change, then people will want to know why it's different.
Good point. We have that capability.
And people aren't going to look for this.
Because like Chad was just doing, you know, research on the parcel to help understand the history, that's great. To be able to pull something like that up to your point. See the note? We ask so many why questions about historical things that are hard to track down. It's great to have it.
This is Eric. And just out of curiosity, what's the downside to just redoing the whole thing? It's one parcel. If somebody can't do anything with it anyway, then they can't do anything with it. So that way you don't need a note. Just keep it consistent.
My only question on, there's not a change in what people, I guess there wouldn't be a tax change on it, so that would be the only worry I'd have on it.
Yeah, the whole parcel is currently taxed as a single parcel, so that's a good question, but I think you're right, there's not an issue. And that is a good point, in my view, that the setbacks will dictate use.
What they can be done there, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, Chad, knock it out.
There can be one pole.
That's where they're going to put in or take out for flooding the river.
All right. So it looks like we have unanimous board approval on moving that entire parcel to mixed use. Ms. Heisner?
Can you hear me? Good morning.
We can.
Teresa Heisner, for the record. I just want to make a comment on that intersection there on Peninsula and 57, if you do change it to mixed use. Both of those parcels have literally no traffic coming in and out of them. I drive it multiple times a day. And I don't think I've ever seen a car going in and out of either one of those parcels. So if in the future someone does decide to put something in there, you have to be mindful of all the traffic coming down 57. It's 60 miles an hour in there, okay? And so there could be problems with IDT down the road. I think it's kind of a slippery slope to be taken, but you guys are free to little old me, but I just wanted to point that out. It's, there's no activity on that intersection now, but in the future, it could be pretty gnarly. Thank you.
Thank you. And ITD would have, if there was going to be any type of a new driveway, a new frontage, they'd have to get a permit for that, to your point, so they'd have to meet the safety criteria.
Right. Well, I know how that goes, but we'll leave it at that. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Chad is fast. It did, it showed up. Thank you. All right, so we are nearing the north border. Just going to pan a little bit in case. I'm sorry, Don, what was that? The bear paw? So is there a specific?
So I have a question on that, where it changes along the river there from rural to ag forest.
This area?
Nope, over, I'm sorry, the Ponderay River.
Oh, man, you're on a whole other river now.
I am, yeah. It's the only two we got in this county, luckily.
Not touching it.
Go to the other river. More to the west, up against the Washington border there. There you go, where that little jog of R5, because of the zoning, it looks like, jogs out there. Is that, is that, is the use on that ag forest because it's zoned for tins? Is that zoned right now for rural tins?
I'm going to pull up the other map.
I'm just curious why that may not fit a rural.
Yes.
Instead of.
It's currently R10.
Okay, so.
So that line is the R5 to R10, which went to Ag10.
Okay, thanks.
You got it. I will click on the tab. I don't know if there's a trick to making the menu at the top of your screen on Zoom go away.
We're too far in, didn't mess with that technical support.
I'll try to get back to my tabs, so. I literally can't select the tab. It looks fine up there, but on my screen, I cannot access.
Do you know how to, if you press your Alt and Tab button, so press Alt first? Like, use your hands like this. Is this what you're trying to do?
That would be.
Do that. Yeah, it will, it will.
Oh, you're right, nice. Awesome, thank you. Yes.
There's probably not a way to move that.
That's a power. It's a power move, I like that, that's perfect. Thank you.
Are you stuck having that bar at the top of the screen?
Yeah, I can't access any of the tabs at the top of, middle of my screen, because the Zoom menu bar is there, and I can't seem to move it.
Can't move the Zoom menu bar.
Apparently I need some training between workshops on how to manipulate Zoom menus.
If you get any training, let me know. I might sit in on one of those.
You just told a flat-out liar.
I just learned a new trick, so. Pretty clear if we review the tape, I didn't say. So how could I lie if I said.
Because you have no intention of my participating. Let's get back to this meeting.
Okay, is there anything else in the Hoodoo Mountain geographic area that any of your Commissioners would like to review? Zooming out so we can see the whole Hoodoo Mountain geographic area, just in case there's some particular location. Somebody thought we missed and we wanted to get more of a look at. Once, twice, three times sold. So now we're going to move north along 57 into the Priest Lake geographic area. We'll start at the south edge and move our way north. Zooming in. Current, I'm sorry, recommended land use designations is the layer that's on right now. Did stand out to me that we have, I see this area was a recent zone change from ag to rural, and so I understand that that's a legal consideration. It appears, however, that this island of blue is not. And so I wanted to have us review, I think it makes sense to keep an island of blue in the middle of the ag.
I'll look to Matt first, him to tell us why that is.
I think if you look at the zoning, the current zoning on that, those are fives.
There's some smaller parcels around there, that's for sure.
Current designation, rural residential. So current zoning. R10. So I think that means it should be AF. So it maintains the 10-acre designation intent. I have to go back to Commissioner Williams' tricks so I can get to the right tab.
The little things matter.
It makes a big difference. Thank you.
Yeah, so this entire strip, north-south strip, is all AF. I'm sorry, R10 right now. So it's my recommendation that this island of eight parcels be changed to the ag designation.
That's in keeping with the.
Island of eight? Oh, you're, okay, I'm looking at the piece south of that.
Yeah, because if we maintain.
There's a lot more than eight there.
If we maintain the rationale that what's currently R10 now becomes an ag designation to become an ag 10, then I think we need to change that designation. May have just been missed in the shuffle. But you can see that's what's happening all through this area.
Yep.
And somehow that one didn't get included. Is the board in agreement?
Yes.
Yeah.
Chad's mouse moved. No, that person said it there for moving his wrist.
So the zoning dictates a lot of what this does. So if, like, if that parcel, not parcel, but that area right south of that, where it's also smaller parcels between those two roads, where the Y of the road is, it's hard to see without your colors on.
So like that five acre parcel?
There's like six parcels just literally due south of those eight. So, but those are all zoned R10. So that's why it's ag now. So if those people wanted to change that in the future, they would have to ask for a rezone? Okay. And the zone change, huh? They would have to ask for both.
But they should, but they would fall under currently, right, the legally existing nonconformance, so.
The current zoning is kind of dictating our map.
You're going to find a lot of going into this area.
There's a lot of parcels that are smaller than the zoning minimum.
Probably especially along the river there, huh? In the lake?
Especially along the lake.
Okay, I haven't got there yet.
Yeah, I haven't got there, but it's the same issue.
That's the big conversation.
They would be legally, legal nonconformant.
Okay.
Moving north.
Out of curiosity, why is that one section of the river dark green? Just south of the R5 parcels there where you could see the river itself? Yeah, I'm just wondering if that's just the GIS mapping thing? Where it's in the ag forest zone, see that loop that does a 180-degree circle that points to the north there, just south of your cursor? If you go down, go down, go down, right there, see the river that goes through that section of land?
I don't see a green part of it.
It's more prevalent on my screen for some reason than on your.
Are you looking at like an Oxbow Lake? Right here?
Where's your cursor? No, just to your left. That horseshoe bend of that lake has shown up dark green on my.
Oh, really?
On my map.
Do you have both current?
That's the current.
Versus recommended?
No, this is the recommended, I'm sorry. This is the current. If I can find that same spot. Current land use.
Turn that off, yeah.
Turn it, turn the current.
Turn the current off?
Okay.
Yep, so if you hit it again.
Hit this again?
Yeah, so that the eye is crossed out. And then if you hit the recommended land use, because right now it's off, to turn it on, see how it looks now.
Still dark green.
That's really interesting, it's not showing up. How am I?
It shows it. Oh, a special computer.
I think it's because you have the topo map on instead of the aerial. The topo map sometimes, if you turn off the layer again, the recommended layer. Just turn off the recommended layer.
Turn that off?
Turn that off. It's the. It's the topo map shows it has federal land, so it's actually the topo map is creating green, not the recommended land use designation. So if you change it to one of the aerial images, it'll go away.
So that's our aerial image?
Yeah, it was thrown that was it was throwing us off in another part of the county before where there was coloring on the topo map that was making our layers look funny.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was weird.
Yeah.
I'm like, why is the river owned by
I don't see it because I have the 2025 aerial imagery on instead of the topo map.
You're on a different page.
They do each different map. Okay. So no question there then. By manipulating the map, we can see as Chad had removed the land use designation colors around along the river. So then as we look at this area where we have this fun blend of lot sizes and designations. Looks like none of these were in the last five years. So it looks like it's was the criteria more along the lines of current parcel size versus
I was wrong on the other one, but maybe check zoning on this one as well.
So many options.
Are you kind of referring to where the ag and the rural is kind of all intertwined with each other?
So it's all AF10 right now, it looks like. Yeah, quite the mix of parcel sizes. This is a challenging. I don't remember my trick.
That's the southwest portion of the D there. Most of those are 10 plus. The rest are right around five.
And that's where so we have very similar, if not the same access considerations, service considerations. Rural pursuits are appropriate in both. It's really the parcel size. It seems like it's the primary factor then.
So if we're not going to change around the lake where we have the same problem, it sounds like. Guess why? Why would we change here then? And leave it nonconforming. I'm trying to figure out that argument.
Right, what's the logic?
As we come to the lake, we're going to change our thinking, but here we're not going to change our thinking.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Literally just a question, not not an argument.
I think it's a question we have to consider. We're trying to be as consistent as we can, and I know around the lake is going to be a challenging question.
Because these parcels, most of them are already five acres or less, so it's not like we're tying someone's hand by putting it into the ag and not that tying their hands that they can't go down to five. They're already at five, right?
Right. From the consistency perspective, instead of having this blotching.
Trying to figure that out.
Oh, it's a good question. Very good question.
So let's say along songs that again. So when you have to go, when you have to go back, remember, you know, we tried to make things consistent with parcel size and that, you know, obviously affected the waterfront properties a lot. And then we, you know, as we've discussed many times, we we had to change course because of all of the comments we had. We didn't necessarily, I think, go back and look at some of these interior parcels. So that may be why, you know, there doesn't seem to be a consistent change there because we were pretty much focused on where we got the most pushback, which was the waterfront. So, you know, it may well be that we just didn't address this again.
Gotcha. It's understandable when a high pressure point is elsewhere. That's where the focus becomes. I do think for consistency, it probably makes sense because it's all, like you said, zoned AF10 right now. We're trying to maintain consistency, continuity to make it all the ag forest designation.
Yeah, I'd like to be consistent on that.
And I don't see that that would create any harm.
I agree. And we'll try to figure out how to apply that again. Like you said, when we get to the lake.
We we understand it's going to be interesting. Because I mean, yeah.
I have a lot of questions about that, which I I understand there's a lot of history there, so. Just legitimate, honest questions, trying to understand how to approach it. So as we get to a few of these areas, just before we get into the waterfront properties at the south end of the lake. Want to confirm again what the existing zoning looks like. So we have a mix of R5 and R10 leading up to Kebna Bay area.
Yeah, so it looks like that first one in the south might be zoned R5. That first block of
Yep.
That low that lower one there?
Yeah, so the two R5 blocks are consistent with the recommendation for the rural residential designation. I think the only nuance is this sort of triangular shape up through the center.
In the middle of that, there's a, looks like an
This area?
Yeah, something changed from there was a different color inside that pink area on whatever you had before, before you went in like that.
Okay, so this is the existing zoning.
So you see that little blue that peaks through that?
Mm-hmm.
And then we're making that percent, we're just coloring that in on the new one.
So so are we, is that a
What is
Right now, that is
Because that looks like it's part of this bigger one.
Rural Service Center. Yeah.
What is the thing to the right like that? That square?
This light blue triangle or?
It looks like it. You see, it looks like it judds here to here in there. But when you click on it up there on what's recommended, it doesn't look like the purple extends.
I think those are all individual parcels. Oh, no, that's an interesting one. Let me turn off the zoning. So
That made it clear as mud.
Yeah, let me It's a fun parcel. That is the most interesting toothed gear corner parcel. I think I've seen it a long time. Does that explain the anomaly you were seeing?
It's makes it an anomaly.
Is that the what you were seeing?
Yeah, it's yeah, it's what I was seeing.
Okay. Wow, that's
Matt? I mean, usually when we see something that looks awkward, you're like
Yeah, so what you're really looking at is Colon in the area right behind Colon there, which, you know, we we essentially tried to follow pretty much the zoning with our land use designation. So if a property was zoned, you know, rural service center, then it got, you know, a similar land use designation. And if it wasn't zoned that, then it got whatever the zoning, whatever was consistent with the zoning, so.
When you went, before you start changing all of that, when you go back to the one where you saw the awkwardness and then you saw how we made, how are we making? See how there's the blue part within part of where the pink is, but there's a the darker blue part was one of the teeth of that larger one? How are we changing that without the
The split designation issue?
Yeah. Why would we not just say this is just going to be one awkward little mess there versus making that portion in line with? You see what I
Yeah, so
Well, it might be that there's there's a larger parcel connected to that. And if you change that one section, you might have a split split zone. I
It looks like a clear line dividing that little molar that's in the middle.
So part of the, yeah, in this whole central area is currently zoned rural service center between the two roads versus the proposed designation of rural residential. Go back to the current zoning. I'm going to switch from zoning to land use. Oh, this is just a fun spot. So we've got resort, community and neighborhood.
On that image, you can see that that little piece that's in that little
Yeah, it's a split designation.
It slides also over this brown piece.
Yeah, I think that's a mapping error that created a split designation.
Is then that
Yeah, we have that issue all through here.
But then go, so there's a good that you think that part where your cursor is is an unintentional overlap?
That's my opinion. I think it's a mapping error. Looks like oh, yeah. There's so many like that through this area on the on the current map. You can also see this, for example, where this designation stops at this line and the other one jogs over to the center, like through the right of way into the center of the road. And so it's
That's a big chunk.
Consistent with So I think
So is that piece right there that your cursor flew over part of the larger?
This triangle?
No, just go down a little bit, that little piece.
Yes, that's part of this.
That's part of this, so.
That's one parcel.
Right. So when you go on the what's recommended, that little piece is being recommended to change. Why would if I
So this whole area between the two roads is being recommended to change to a different type of land use designation?
So a part of the larger that larger piece of property is going to be different than that small part?
Mixed use.
And so do so when this came up on the one before, we said it's just a small, why why not make that piece stay consistent with the larger piece and carve it out as nonconforming of that area? I guess I'm just trying to understand why that one would change with the larger piece not changing. And is it just because of its proximity to the other side, but then you're creating?
So as proposed, it's all the same designation for that parcel? But I believe the other question in front of us is, should this central area between the two roads be rural residential designation or something else? When we looked at, if we look at the current use and the current designation and current zoning? Because it's if we go back to the, oh, sorry, my map stopped working again. My layer is one of, I have the same The cloud kicked me off. It doesn't like me. Crazy driver. So if I go back to the other GIS map that is still letting me work. We have the resort community designation in the southern half of that central high shape, high slice. And then we have the neighborhood commercial on the northern portion and a little bit of rural residential mixed in. So it's a very unique. And then if I switch from current land use to current zoning, with the exception of those two parcels that are R5, everything else is rural service center.
Which is a permitted zoning and recreation area.
This is Malinska here, you know, my suggestion that you know, that there's a triangle there between those two roads that are not part of that other large parcel. That should align with the
This one?
Yes. I have no idea why why it's not, you know, for myself, it's it's hard for me to see some of these colors up here.
Yeah, and and while I'm kind of going back to the I'm reluctant to to downgrade someone's use of the of what they had when they purchased the parcel. And right now, because it's the designation is the resort community and that resulted in a zone of the rural service center. We compare that to the proposed I still don't have access. Maybe if I refresh.
I think I'm
Reboot, I know. Bless you.
It's very difficult to me. I think we have to be careful removing a spot that was designated as resort, like some of the labels like resort, recreation that allow for those activities. Because once people move into those areas, then people don't want to switch out because they don't, they want to kind of control growth. And I think that's in part. So if we've already designated it as such, I do have a hard time removing those because those have been identified as it if it's reasonable for it to maintain that. Because when you look at, I think the the planning commissions feel that a lot of issues, when you, when you get up to the Priest Lake area where it's recreation, where they had to address people's concerns regarding basically the growth of recreation in the area and the resort, and you see that. So I want to be very mindful of of removing something that's already been identified as that.
I agree.
Because that's hard to get kind of, there's a community support aspect too, as well as kind of a reduction of what you can use it for. But that little part I'd like to know, Matt, what do you think or?
Chad, yes. That triangle is not part of a subdivision. You turn on the subdivision layer. That particular piece is not part of the subdivision, so you'll probably have to go back to the other map. Commissioner Domke, unfortunately, I don't have the subdivision layer on this map.
Okay, I was like, wait, how do I turn on the subdivision layer? I'm missing a layer?
But I believe under the cadastral layer, that might help solve the mystery there.
Oh, thank you. So these two
Can you click the zoning off?
These two this one and the larger toothed monster are not part of the subdivision, to your point. Thank you.
Why is he sitting back in the corner?
He needs a plug in, right?
And so in my mind, yeah, I think that goes back to then with the exception of the multifaceted lot and the small triangle above it, the remainder of the remainder of these that are in between the two roads, based on their current designation and zoning, I think we need to consider changing those from rural residential into the resort or some other designation to better align with what, what types of uses those parcels are currently permitted. Thank you.
Chad, do you have the microphone? No, I thought, I thought you were looking for it.
Oh, no, no.
He was just hiding.
No, he has something to say.
Well, the only thing I can think of.
You already did change. I heard. I was just meaning you to say. You thought you already did change it.
Well, that's what we were just discussing. We don't know why that would have changed to the rural when it's already.
I mean, to be consistent with what we were trying to do, if that was zoned recreation, we kept it, it should be kept recreation. And if you look at what's actually in there, there's a lot of, you know, boat repair, boat storage.
Yes.
Clearly.
Two existing commercially used parcels. I would agree that these, these that are currently zoned should be changed over to the recreation.
Right, right. We did not intend to change what was currently zoned recreation to anything else.
This is Matt here.
Not sure. We may have changed something to rural service center, but that's, no, we wouldn't have done that, hit that zoning, so, yeah, never mind. We didn't, we wouldn't have changed it.
This is Matt here, but if, actually, if you look on the east side of that road, you're going to see a couple of parcels there. If you zoom in, you know, I think they're Texas Commercial. If I'm not mistaken, those are boat storage.
That's what it looks like.
Right there. And, and so it kind of bigs the, the argument. Maybe that entire thing should be squared off, blocked off, and all designated the same.
See differences in use as we move away?
Well, it, it's going to be bordering public land if I'm not mistaken. I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't talking about squaring that up, that, that distance out, just that, where we were.
The toothed part.
Yeah. Where those two, where like, where the boat storages are. And I actually think, one of them actually does motor, boat motor repair there as well.
Yeah, I would, I would go back to the current land use designation. My recommendation is to take all of those parcels, change them to the recreation designation. I think that was what you guys were intending. Oh, is this where you were talking about over here, Matt?
Correct.
Yeah, where the store.
Square, square, square that whole thing out.
Basically.
Yes.
From this parcel. South.
Both sides of that road.
Parcel.
Larger, I guess we're calling it the toothed parcel. That's within Coolin, Coolin sewer district.
Okay.
And that, one of those, that small cutout furthest to the north is Coolin Sewer District. I think it's the transfer station.
Sorry, my computer is shut down.
It's seven minutes early. It wants lunch.
It said I had battery, but apparently not.
I can give you this cord. It'll set your computer on fire though.
Please continue.
Yeah, that, that northern small cutout of the piece of that toothed piece is owned by, is owned by Coolin Sewer District. And I believe it's a, it must be a pump station or transfer station or something. But that larger piece is in the sewer district. Whether or not it's served, I have no idea. I know Coolin Sewer District's been on a moratorium, whether legal or not, for the past three or four years. So I don't know how much their service has expanded. But it is within their, their district boundary. So it is maybe not safe to assume, but there's a, an assumption that it could be served by the sewer district.
And I see the point that on the east side of, I can't remember which road it is, East Road. Thank you. We had, do you have those two commercial, commercially taxed parcels? To the point that Matt raised, these two? And so I can see where, I can see where including that east side between that and the services makes sense for the recreation designation. Are the other commissioners in agreement if they're understanding?
Chad driving now?
Chad's driving.
Chad's driving.
Chad doesn't kick, Chad doesn't get kicked off the cloud server. So Chad, if you wouldn't mind, just so we can try to see if we can come to a conclusion before the top of the hour. So I'm guessing is what I, what I heard recommended and I'm agreeing with is from this narrow parcel down to this parcel, if that were all to be included with the area between the roads that we've been discussing to be all recreational designation, we already have two parcels that are tax commercial in that area plus the current designation between the roads and two tax commercial parcels in there as well. So it seems like we'd be creating consistency. We have, it meets the intent of the access with the roads and adjacency to services as well as adjacency to a body of water.
What about this? That little triangle there at the top?
Yeah, that's a question.
Just the sliver here, if we should tie that in.
And the question is, you take the larger parcel, the toothed parcel? I guess the real question becomes, do we, do we, something like the way I just suggested, or do we take everything east of Dick and Sheet Road?
Right.
Within that, that block?
Because I could see where that could be. I keep trying to wrap my head around what we're doing. A future plan.
Yeah. And to Alex's point, there's the adjacency of services. We just don't know what capacity is. But we don't, capacity's not. A consideration within the designation.
Right.
So would you, are you recommending all of the parcels?
I would.
East of Dick and Sheet?
Make a nice clean.
That are currently rural, rural residential designation? Be changed to the resort designation?
Yeah, because also that large parcel there, they have frontage on east side and is that one? Loski? So that parcel has two, although that's a minor road, right? It's not a major, but I just think it would be cleaner whether or not it ever gets used for that, but it, it has the capability of it.
Yeah, through our system upgrades and expansions, water sewer in the future, things of that nature.
I'm.
So it's a question of those parcels in blue to the north right now.
The question I had, Commissioner Williams, is if you scroll to the north just a little bit, there's another triangle piece on the right side. Yeah, that piece there. It's like, why wouldn't that be included? So then, I don't see any reason why that shouldn't be included. So if I include that, then the map looks.
Can we confirm what it's currently listed as?
That triangle or the big piece?
Uh, the triangle.
The current is rural residential.
Because equally, I know, sort of playing kind of, knowing what some of the comments were in that area, some people equally don't want their area to go from residential to recreation and have that pushed into the residential areas. So your recommendation is to make, to make a change to that, which it makes the map look right. I don't disagree, but I, it's the, trying to have the equal push and pull on the change area. Because part of what a lot of people had issues with was, and, and I'll use this as a, a lot of people give comments to the county as it relates to even having the, like your two RVs on the property that make it look like recreation in a residential area, which has an image of changing the use and impacting the footprint. Would you impact that property in that way by the change in the opposite direction versus looking at what was already zoned recreation and maintaining that?
Bring the map down a little bit.
So we can see more context to the north.
So that triangle I'm referring to is smaller than an acre of land. Brunts that east side, East River Road, even though it's zoned rural, rural five, R5, rural residential. To me, it just, I don't see why, why that wouldn't be included. By including that really isn't changing the area. If that is a concern, keeping it rural, it's.
Yeah, it's quite a combination, the whole context in that area. And I can see the value of keep, trying to preserve the larger lot. But to your point, that really small parcel on the north side. So that's, that's the very north end on the east side of the east road.
The north side of the east side of the east road.
That really sounds like a cadastral description. So that parcel.
I would, my opinion is to go ahead and change that.
That and the triangle below it makes sense to me.
Yes.
The other piece that's a cog in the wheel of the larger parcel, preserving that in the rural residential to me makes sense as a larger lot.
Does it?
It does to me.
Because that large lot would never use that piece of dirt there on the other side of that road as part of the large lot. It could, that's kind of my point, even though it's all one parcel. It's divided, no different than by the railroad or something like that. It's divided by that road there. And it's not a very large parcel. I don't even know, can we even tell how big that section is? It's all one, so.
Well, I guess to your point, if that was, if it was allowed to be a split designation, then they could potentially carve that one off into an individual parcel for.
Right. Yes, exactly. It's divided by the road, which gives it a great boundary.
Yeah. Yeah, I, again, as much as I don't like split designations, I can see where that makes sense in the instance of the road and.
Right.
Consistency of that grouping of recreational uses.
Right.
You can make the argument that it, I, especially given that that's the Coolin district there, you could make the argument of just leaving it the way it is instead of forcing it into a change. I ju, I'm just not convinced on that thought. Square changing it, but equally, we'll say we're only twelve and I've got.
Oh, now we know how to do this. So just to go ahead and conclude, let's go ahead and change it and we'll move on.
No, just, just.
It sounds, well, it sounds like there's a two to one make the change. I, so that would be the way that you would go.
I, you know, so Alan, so I said again, I, I don't, I don't think that particular parcel was the one, was ones of the ones that were of concern. It was more of, you know, somehow creating more resort, more marinas, more of this and that on the, on the waterfront, not necessarily back in the Coolin area like this off the east side road or, you know, by Dick and Sheet. And it's already pretty, it's pretty commercial right now. So I don't think that was a major concern, that, that little parcel.
My recommendation for today's workshop would be to ask GIS to change those parcels that are currently zoned and are currently designated, or those recreational uses, to show the recreational designation on the proposed map. And then we can revisit all the other parcels that are R5 in the next workshop to make a decision about those. Does that work?
Yeah.
That way we're consistent with the current designation and we can decide on if we want to make changes outside of that. Further discussion.
So we can pick up our discussion where we left off, minding about it again.
At least we'll be, at least we'll be in alignment with the, the current designation and the proposed designation.
Commissioner, GIS?
Yes.
Before we adjourn, I did find the third meeting that we had. None of us got the invite to it. So it will be this upcoming Monday, the 24th at 2:00 PM.
Monday, the 24th?
Monday, the 24th at 2:00 PM. And then I'll, I'll list out the other ones just for everybody online. Then we have December 4th at 10:00 AM. And December 15th at 10:00 AM.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
2:00 PM on November 24th.
I would follow the, the update meeting.
Yep, it'll be right after the planning update meeting.
Okay.
So you guys get three hours, I think.
Thank you for updating us.
I have a sort of laundry request, I guess. Since we're getting into the Priest Lake area, this is a, I know pretty well.
I'm not really, I, where I'm going to be in Boise on the 24th. So I don't know how good a computer access I'm going to have. So if I could get a, you know, an invitation to that from the planning commission, I mean, from the planning department, I would appreciate it because I think I have some information to contribute on Priest Lake.
Can we, can we work on a different area Monday besides this one?
So, I'm sorry, Alan, when you say get an invitation, what do you mean by that?
He's going to be out of town.
Going to be out of town. So, so I don't know what kind of computer access I'm going to have, but if you can email a link to my.
Okay.
Then I can, you know, forward that to.
It's easier for you to get.
To get on. Right.
As long as he's available. I do think he has some, a lot of valuable inputs since he's in that area.
Absolutely. We'd like to take advantage of that. Yeah, if we can help make it easier to connect. Great. Thank you. All right, then it is 12:08 PM and this workshop is adjourned. Thank you.